Good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, May 15, 2025. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Counselor McCurn.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, we're here for work session today. The first item on the agenda today is matters surrounding Riverhead Police Department, Riverhead in Action video in support of National Police Week, which happens to be this week. It ends on Saturday, so if we can prep that and run it. Councilman Rothwell and myself went down to the police department, were the liaisons to the police department, and we got a little tour of headquarters and spoke to the captain in chief. This is an abbreviated version of it. The longer version will actually eventually be on our YouTube channel because it was quite a lot to take in, but we have to cut it down a little bit for our work session. So. Hey, this is Tim Hubbard, supervisor of the great town of Riverhead, and you're watching Riverhead in Action, a media campaign designed to highlight the incredible work of the 350-plus employees that comprise Riverhead's 26 departments and sub-departments, town events, projects, job openings, local businesses, and other town happenings. I hope you find this informative and enjoyable, and thank you for watching Riverhead in Action. I have with me today Councilman Ken Rothwell. He and I are the liaisons to the Riverhead Police Department. And with us from the police department, we have our new police chief, Ed Frost, and we have our new captain, Captain Danielle Willsey. We're up to 100 sworn officers in the department. We'll let you two bring up the award that town just recently got, the two awards from the state.
Yes, we were recognized by the Stop DWE, MAD, and the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for a department of 51 to 100 members for excellence for the year of 2024, for DWI enforcement and education as well. You know, the SROs teaching at the schools to the kids in the high school. We do our pre-prom meeting with the people going to the prom so they understand the dangers of drinking and driving or using drugs and driving.
That's what's incredible is your community engagement outside of just law enforcement, enforcing rules, regulations, and town codes and laws, but your community engagement getting out there into the high school, into the community has just been phenomenal work.
We're inside the communications room. This is where all the phone calls come into the police department. They're really the heart and soul of the department. Everything that comes through the department starts right here, so it's important that they get the information right and they dispense that information out to the officers on the road.
Correct. We have 11 full-time dispatchers, and they handle the call from call-taking until the end. They'll take all the information in, they'll dispatch it out to the officers or the ambulance, and all the communication from the police officer to headquarters comes through the dispatchers. They have a lot of responsibilities in here. They're great at their job. Appreciate them all being here. And then as soon as the call is over, they'll close it out, and usually there's two or three more calls coming in. They are busy all day long.
Now, in noticing it's kind of cramped in here with the number of dispatchers, so part of the plan is when we refurbish the old town hall into Justice Court, you're going to be able to expand on the other side of the building into where Justice Court was, so it will make this a little more pleasant and workable for all the dispatchers in here.
Right, they have six screens up each. They're looking at a lot of things at one time. If they had a little more room, that would be great.
All right, this is our front desk area. It's where the desk officer sits, monitors calls coming in, as well as taking walk-in complainants that might come to the police department to report a matter. Also, behind us is the patrol sergeant's desk. So the patrol sergeant's in charge of all the officers that are working in a given tour. This is also where all our spare radios are stored, you know, so they can get charged up. So this is a busy hub of the police department.
What was the driving force that made you decide to make this your career?
Me personally, my godfather and my cousin was in law enforcement. He was actually in the Treasury Department as an agent. I kind of always looked up to him.
Captain Willsey, how about you?
Well, I've had no one in my family at all ever who was police officer. I think I just wanted to do something different from everybody else.
I always say, so proud of the blue in terms of that here in Riverhead in the small-town politics, it's community policing leads to community engagement. I just look around in the chief's pictures of the kids in lacrosse games and things like that. That's what's great about Riverhead, our community, is that, you know, we're seeing you at the family functions, at the family games. I'm just so proud too, the families that you have and the engagement which leads to just people can approach you on the athletic field, outside, in restaurants, talking around. So many of our offices are also involved in volunteer firefighting services as well. And so that's what's great about Riverhead is that wherever you go and you seem to bump into a police officer and you have kind of that casual chat, and that also keeps you alert towards what's going on, all the small things that maybe those 911 calls that don't come through, you just gain it from being around town.
We're in our detective squad for our police department. Detectives investigate felony-level crimes up.
One thing I want to say about the detective division is that our closure rate, or their closure rate, I should say, I used to work here, no longer, their closure rate is phenomenal on cases. There's a closure to the case, there's an arrest, and the case is solved. Now, we're outside with the motorcycle squad of the Riverhead Police Department. The bikes that you see in front of you were donated to us through Suffolk County PD, through County Executive Ed Romaine, and this was solely set up by Councilman Rothwell, so I'll let Councilman Rothwell take the lead here.
So absolutely, thank you very much, County Executive Ed Romaine, who had gifted two motorcycles to us. We now, in addition, this is a 2025, so we have a third one now in our fleet, and so we're growing. There's a great amount of training that goes into being a motorcycle police officer, but if you want to tell us a little bit about your training here.
Sure, so myself and Officer Lazowski had an eight-week course with the Nassau County Police Department, going over everything from the nomenclature of the motorcycles, everything to outriding with normal traffic and everything of such, escorts, funerals, everything in between.
It was an eight-week course. It was very vigorous, a lot of maneuvers, getting to know the bike. Like Officer Sashkevich said, a lot of traffic safety with the bike, traffic parades, line of duty, funerals, regular funerals, any kind of police escorts. These bikes could actually do a lot more than what a lot of people think they can, and they're a very great, excellent tool to have with the police department.
All right, in closing, we had a wonderful day here today with the Riverhead Police Department, with Chief Frost and Captain Willsey, and we got a tour of the building, the inside parts, from Communication Center to the Detective Division, and how things are handled and how the operations work daily here. Our motorcycle unit is awesome. We're so proud of that, but we couldn't be more proud of the men and women of the Riverhead Town Police Department. They do a fantastic job. It's a busy department. Each officer is trained in so many different aspects of law enforcement. It makes a better, well-rounded police department. And Ken, I don't know about you, but I can't say enough good about these guys, the men and women, they're incredible in the work they do.
And so many other things that we haven't touched upon today, our K-9 unit and other things, and our COPE units that are out there, just phenomenal, so proud of our men and women in blue.
Absolutely, SCUBA team.
Yes.
Marine Bureau. There's so much included that we didn't get to, but this will just give the people some idea of what our police department does and what they're about. So this has been an episode of Behind the Badge of Riverhead in Action, and we thank you for tuning in. As I said, this is an abbreviated version. Very shortly, we'll have up on our YouTube channel the full interview and the full tour, so you can tune in and get much more information than this. Thank you, Justin, for coming down and doing this. Great job, we appreciate it, as always. And we will move on now to the second matter on the list today is matters surrounding the monthly police report with Chief Frost. That's a good segue, coming right into your monthly report.
Thank you for coming down and filming us. The men and women of the police department, you know, are very proud, and, you know, they do an excellent job for the community overall. I wouldn't be able to have such a good department without them. Okay, you guys have it all?
Yes. So, you know, the criminal incidents is what I kind of look at as well. It's 132. Let's see what. Sue in, so we went down from last month. March was 150, so that's a good trend going down, obviously. We had a total of 2,838 calls for the month, a little higher than last year. Pretty much what I have for you guys, unless you guys have, it was two non-fatal overdoses, one out in Wayne River, one on 58.
Both Narcan?
Yes, by EMS. One required two doses and the other required one. I attended the Heart of Riverhead Civic Association, and Claudette actually asked me a good question, so I'd like to get her answer out. So she asked, what is the number of, what is the percentage of criminal incidents compared to non-criminal? So our criminal instances are only 4% of our total call volume for the whole month.
4%.
4%. So I just figured I'd give you that information.
But it's 100% of the negative headlines that appear.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, there are some serious incidents do occur, but like in the video, we do, you know, most of the time make arrests, you know, on those serious incidents, so detectives do an excellent job on that.
Oh, the closure rate, I can't speak enough about that.
Yeah, so I mean, and again, all the other technology-based stuff that's out there is greatly helping us, so.
Cameras are all up around town? We've all set up with those?
The last action has been installed. They actually look good. And pretty much what I got, unless you guys have anything to add.
I just want to give you a compliment that I was speaking with the Chamber of Commerce this morning and also in downtown Riverhead the other night, and both times people were very complimentary of the fact that you have officers patrolling downtown, much more officers, and you yourself patrolling. They very much appreciate, they appreciate that very much. And also, you left out so many other things, the community outreach that our police department does. The cap vapes, the undercover, go into the different smoke shops and see who's selling illegally. You also do the Huddle for Hunger. The police department goes and has football games with the community. You do the bike rodeo with the community, give them bikes, right? And you do the toys at Christmas. So much outreach that you do that can't even be covered in the video. I just can't say enough.
I'm trying to get the department more out to the public and doing more public events. You know, I think in the past, that's kind of where we lacked a little bit, so that's a big push for me as well.
Chief, I had a meeting last week with School Superintendent Pelish. She was ecstatic about the SRO officers in the school. She said the relationship, the bonds that have been formed between the students and the officers are incredible. She said there was a little concern when they first came in. Some groups came in and met with her. They were afraid of what this was going to be and how it was going to work. Those same groups are now openly communicating with the officers, extremely happy that they're there. And, you know, like I said, eventually someday, maybe we can get one in every school, but extremely happy, and the two officers are doing a fantastic job.
It's good to hear. Yeah, I had meetings with those groups as well. I know that's not the purpose of an SRO. It's to actually show the police as like a person and reach out on a, you know, an individual basis to show, you know, we're people as well, we're just not, you know. I think Eric and Kaylee were good choices to fill those spots.
Agreed.
They're definitely good officers, so.
I would like you to know that I attended the bike rodeo the other day, and it was wonderful to see the way that your officers interacted with the families and especially the children, high-fiving them, encouraging them, and structuring a relationship, and you could see the trust that was kind of being formed. And they really did a great job.
Yeah, that's been going on for at least 30 years.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's a long-running event, but again, it's big outreach to the public at all ages is important for me, so that's how I, you know, put it through my department to say, no, that's what I'm looking for, so.
It was just so nice to see so many kids on bicycles.
Yeah.
You know, not doing this.
Yes, right.
Absolutely.
Chief, one question.
Sure.
On the revenues collected, is that correct, the 736?
It is correct. With our RMS changeover, we lost our alarm billing module, so we're working on, we actually have to hand right now, get those bills out. So that's pretty much our biggest drop is that. I'm working, we're working on developing a program to do it electronically, but when we went over, it knocked out our module where our old system had an automatic one. So I'm working with IT, and we have an intern starting next week, so we're going to use that individual to, you know, speed that process up, at least getting the bills out. And there are some bills that are outstanding that, you know, I have to work with the town intern's office for, you know, collecting the revenue.
I paid my alarm bill.
Did you? Yeah, changing over, the new system had, you know, a lot of advantages, but we did lose some other stuff that, you know, we're at really at the will of the county, because it's a county program, and sometimes, you know, their needs go in front of everyone else's, and it's hard to, you know, get them focused on what we need sometimes.
Which is why it's great we have our own police department.
Yes, that, correct, yes, definitely, so.
Also, just saying too, there's a number of police officers being honored next week here, too. I mean, the police officers very often are the first on scene on any major AID cases, and how your officers have responded in CPR saves is just phenomenal, and so that they're so actively engaged, talented, and they know how to properly perform, and they are truly saving lives, so thank you for everything that they do.
No problem.
Excellent job. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
See you later.
Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding presentation by Open Space Committee. Be with Bob Kerm, and Open Space Committee, come on up. Thank you guys for coming in, appreciate it.
This is not the whole committee, this is three of us. Justin asked if we had this on the laptop. We do not, but he has it, so we're going to have to communicate with him.
Yeah, okay. Justin, I guess there's something you can put up?
Okay. Great.
All right, so you know what to do, just say thanks. Okay, on this slide.
Hit it.
Hit it, there you go.
There it is.
Right, so we put together a number of slides showing our accomplishments, things we'd like to do, goals that we have. Our opening slide shows you the Sound Avenue Preserve before we touched it. This is looking from private road, Terry Road, down towards Sound Avenue. So to the left is what became the Sound Avenue Preserve. So in the next slide, please, this is the committee members, some you know, some you don't, but we also have Julie Wasnawski attends our meetings as a liaison from the iconic land trust. So we're fortunate to have her input, you know, as well, you know, as everyone else, so it's a good committee. You know, we all have a lot of experience with different properties and all, so.
Could you just identify yourselves?
Sure. I'm Janice Leonti, I'm the chairperson of the committee. George, I think you know, George Bartner. And Nancy Gilbert.
Nancy Gilbert.
Don't forget Ann Marie Brindette.
Ann Marie is not listed on there, she is our council. And we love her. Next slide, Justin. And we have a mission to identify, review, and recommend lands to be purchased as open space. At this point right now, as you know, we don't have funds to spend. In the past, a lot of money from the CPF has been spent on purchasing property, so now we're paying down debt, the town. So that seems to be working nicely, but we want to do more stewardship of existing open space sites, and they need it. There are things that we've done, and you'll see that later on in the slides. So the next slide shows the purchases since the inception of the program, in 2002 approximately. The last one is Sharper's Hill in Jamesport, but that's highlighted because that was a county purchase.
And Janice, I would mention that these names are the owners of the property, so their names you might not recognize. These are not what the properties are known by now.
Right, so just for example, you know, we have renamed different things, you know, the Goldman property, we're calling the Milpon Preserve, because it encompasses Milpon. So is it official? No, but I guess we can get that done. The Sound Avenue Preserve is the Carter, Larson-Carter property, and, you know, we have a big sign out there now. So next slide, you'll see some of the summary of purchases and the money that was spent from CPF funds and county funding. So also, the town has a management agreement for Sharper's Hill.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. And also, one would be coming for North Fork Preserve, and that's not in place yet. So nothing has been done there. Sharper's Hill, there has been work by the town done, cutting trails, making it accessible, but there is more work to be done there. So the next slide just shows one of the trails on the properties. We're looking to improve a number of the properties with trails and different things, amenities. So the next slide will show.
That's where I come in, isn't it?
Right, it will show Weeping Willow, and George is going to give you a whole background on Weeping Willow.
Does everybody know where the Weeping Willow Hotel was on West Main Street? I mean, it was really a blight. And I guess it's a classic example, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold in getting over, a classic example of how the town took the property or bought the property and improvements on the property. There was a little bit of controversy at the time, I was on the town board on this, was purchased, and it was expensive, but given that the sewer stream and system that existed there, maybe we could show the next slide, show the next slide. And on the left, it shows what the hotel looked like at the time before the demolition. On the right is what it looked like after all the buildings were removed and of course there were, another reason why it was purchased is because of the amount of hard surface area that existed there for parking, the buildings alone. You can imagine the stuff that was washed into the river from that operation, not only by the septic, but all by the pavement and everything, runoff and everything like that. Next slide, I guess we can go on to the next slide, the improvement that has been made by this committee fairly recently was the old fencing that exists along the eastern section of the property. Go to next slide, showing the new fencing that's been installed there. And the committee would like to also invest in some native vegetation to be planted there at a later date. So that's kind of a typical example of what the committee, the priorities of the committee is now, to maintain the properties that have been purchased by, for open space.
And as we say, that there is rarely a beautiful fence, but in this case, it's a beautiful fence.
If you have any questions as we go along, if we can't answer it, we can find the answer for you.
Maybe.
Okay, guess the next slide? Sound Avenue Preserve, I guess it's.
Yes, Sound Avenue Preserve, here we're looking, Terry Road is to the left side, and we're just looking north across the meadows that meet Sound Avenue. North of that, the tree line, at Sound Avenue Preserve, you walk through the meadow trails, through the wooded area, and then up to another meadow area that ascends gently, it's hikeable, and excellent for bird watching and all sorts of things. So the next slide will show a little bit more. We had a beautiful sign made up that shows people on Sound Avenue driving by that this is Town of Riverhead Nature Preserve, and how the property was purchased and improved. So the next slide is an aerial shot. Sound Avenue is at the bottom of the screen, and it shows the trails that go through the meadow area. Highway Department used their brush cutter to cut the trails. And if there's a bisecting road about halfway up the slide, that goes into the wooded area, and then atop is the next meadow that you can hike through. It's a short but nice and easy hike if you want to do that. We developed the parking area, the gravel parking area at the bottom there off Sound Avenue, so it's very easy for people to use. They don't have to walk off Sound Avenue or anything, they drive right into the preserve.
It's a beautiful piece of property.
It is, it's wonderful. And on each side is 4H, is the east and west 4H camp, so you can see horses in the fields and that kind of thing, so it is a wonderful spot. The next slide, we had a barn which we all thought was very charming on the Sound Avenue Preserve property, and we really wanted to use it, and part of the roof caved in, and then the engineering department took a look at it and said, it would, just can't be fixed. It would have to be demolished, and you have to rebuild it almost entirely. So they did demolish the barn, so that's gone. And it was a good move because it was becoming dangerous, you know, people could break into it or jump in from the collapsed part and that kind of thing. So the next slide shows just a couple of improvements at the Sound Avenue Preserve. You know, we've got birds going in and out of those birdhouses, there are benches to rest, and then the trails go pretty much in each direction up through the meadow. So it's lovely now, and we'd like to do some more planting there, particularly in the lower part around the parking area, soften things up. We did planting when, I guess about 2012, and I can say most of it survived, but some did not, so that's.
You know, we would like to maybe bring our Riverhead in Action video out and maybe go with you guys on a walking tour of a couple of these places, because they really are beautiful, pristine pieces of property, and I think we should be proud of it and let the general public know about these properties that may not have been up there.
We've talked about that a lot.
Yeah.
And one of the things we'd like to do is we would like to have this possibility of a kiosk being constructed on this property, and it would be dedicated to the display of the history, heritage of Sound Avenue. And the Sound Avenue Preserve, let's tell the people who drive down Sound Avenue from Queens what Sound Avenue is.
Terry's are probably, if not the, they're definitely one of the oldest generational families, the founding fathers of the Town of Riverhead.
That would be an idea maybe for the back of the kiosk, is the history of the family, the charity, I guess.
So we're thinking about the kiosk being placed right off the parking area, so people coming in could see that, get some information about it, and then take their hike or vice versa.
I thought that you had somebody that was going to build that.
We have an Eagle Scout candidate.
I was just going to suggest that would be a perfect project.
Yeah, and he met with us, he came to the meeting, and he was wonderful. He came with his dad, and he said he would oversee this building of the kiosks. So that was just a couple of months ago. He's in school, he's in scouts, so, you know, whenever he's ready, we're ready, you know, so.
It'll be done before he's 18.
If he wants to be an Eagle Scout, he's going to do the project. So the next slide, Nancy or George?
Yes, it's mine.
Okay, oh, George will take it.
You know, I was looking for the interpretation of what Mi'amamawg meant, and it's a gathering place by the Native Americans, gathering place of fishermen. It's interesting, it was probably a great place for the Indians, Native Americans to gather for the fishing expeditions. This was purchased, it was done in 2008, about 2.3 acres of property. This was purchased because the residents down there who owned the property, I think primarily to the west of this, were complaining about people driving down to the end of the point, the road there, and they were complaining about people going onto their property. So that was one of the reactions of the town of why they bought this property. At the time, it seemed like a very expensive piece of property, but now I think it was a very, very good investment. The park was built with a grant from the Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation for $350,000, and the town kicked in about $20,000 for the park area.
There's a beautiful wooden walk right through there.
Yes, that was part of the building, of the project, of the construction.
It's too bad we couldn't save the other side of South Jamesport Avenue.
Yeah, but the next slide will show you what the possibility of this place was. If you can imagine, this was a hotel that was built on that site. Nancy said this is a 1910 photograph of the hotel. If you can imagine what was built there. If you can imagine what was built there at one time. This was actually dismantled in 1952. That's when it was last-
I thought that it burned down, no?
There were two others hotels that burned down, but this was dismantled.
Amazing, no one knows that it was over there. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's also amazing that way back then, Riverhead, you know, James Port is in Riverhead, was all about hotels. There was hotels put up way back, way back then.
Resorts, yeah.
It was a heyday resort area in its heyday. It was amazing. People, well, we know the history. Let's go on to the open space.
All right. I get Sharper's Hill. And sorry, we don't have a lot of beautiful pictures to show you. The reason this is so critically important is that 3,000 years ago, the Native Americans started using this as the burial site. So, it's critically important archaeologically and historically. The preservation story is, as you all know, very long and complicated. The site plan proposal was made in 2004 to put in a commercial development that included 145,000 feet of commercial development and was intending to remove 88,000 cubic yards of sand. Now, how much is 88,000 cubic yards of sand?
Show the next.
Well, no, but it's fine. This is the site plan. We'll go, it doesn't matter. I only have the two slides. The important part of this is the history, unfortunately, and we don't have a lot of slides of that. But 88,000 cubic yards of sand is 6,000 dump truck loads. So, that's what was intended, they were intending to move out. This was purchased finally by the county in 2017. So, it took 13 years for the community to save this. It caused a lot of opposition. There were town board meetings where over 100 people came and spoke. There were lots of articles written. It was exceedingly sensitive to the community, so it was a great, a great save eventually. So, the land trust, iconic land trust, was very much involved. And what happened was, as you all know, Jules Bet went bankrupt, and the next owner was willing to talk about preservation possibilities. The land trust approached him. They convinced him to put a cover crop on the farmland. There's 30 acres of farmland north of this, and he agreed to do that, and the county agreed to come in and look at it and make a CPF County Preservation Fund offer on that property. So, that's how it was saved. So, let's look at the development plan. Thank you. Those little lines across the back on the upper right-hand side, that is the edge of Sharper's Hill, and that's what they were intending to cut out. That is supposedly a retaining wall. They were going to put a new road through the middle of the development. So, now, it's simply a trail that leads up the hill and then loops around and comes back down. We are waiting for the county to approve the sign. We haven't got heard back from them yet. And this is an interesting project because it is county money, but the town has the management contract for it. So, the James Port Civic Association is heavily invested in this project. We hear from them frequently, and we do want to work with them to make this accessible to people and so people understand. The sensitivity around the sign is, of course, how much do you acknowledge the archaeological findings that are there? And the Native American community really needs to approve the wording that is on the sign. So, we're very lucky to have it. And the name Sharper's Hill, by the way, if you don't know, it's an interesting story. There was a schoolhouse at the bottom of Sharper's Hill, and the schoolmaster there, by the name of Ezekiel Aldrich, wrote a poem calling Sharper's Hill "A Noble Place of Ancient Form," and he named it Sharper's Hill. We don't know where the name came from, but that's the earliest reference in print, so it's been Sharper's Hill ever since. But the town has gone in, and we have trails that we have been developed there. They're not extensive because we wanted to be sensitive to potential burying grounds for Native Americans. So, there are trails, but the county proposed parking be cut into the area, and our committee was not happy with that. So, there will not be a parking area there, but there is a sidewalk along the front there, and, you know, they'll walk into there. But we just didn't want the trails to be extensive and go up into what is potentially that burying ground.
Yeah. The indigenous people are very concerned about that. I met with them recently, and they are very concerned, and they're very thankful that it was preserved because certainly this would have disrupted a burial ground by all means. And I'm not sure whatever would have happened anyway, because once they started unearthing artifacts, I think that would have been the stop to it altogether. But this was the best thing that could have been done. And the way the trails are set up, they don't actually go right to the burial grounds, which they're very comfortable about. Because they don't want people going in. It's illegal, people should know, to remove artifacts. But this way, it keeps it, you can get an idea of what it was like, but you're not actually right in the middle of what is most sacred.
And I should mention, it was really, the town board voted finally for a full environmental impact statement, and this preservation never would have happened if that step had not taken place. So, that was an important piece of the story. Yeah, it's a, it's a great story. Next slide. So, we just wanted to show you, we have, the highway department created, made these signs for us, and we have an open space sign marking every one of our properties. One has been removed. We don't know by whom. But Bob is going to secure some extras for us so that we can replace signs that people simply have to have. I don't know why, but- But we wanted the community at large, and people visiting our community, to see open space and where these existing sites are, and that this is what, when you've paid into this fund at your real estate closing, that this is where the money is going. This is what we're doing. People aren't aware of this at all, but now I hope these signs help. We didn't want anything too big or crazy, you know, we just wanted to note the signs. As other townships do, the county does, you know, I know on Edwards Avenue, the Old Beagle Club-
Yes.
-that has a sign to Seppa County Park. So, you know, we wanted to join in that, just so people could know. Next slide, please.
Kowalinski, that's an interesting purchase. And I think, if you look at this picture, it kind of really illustrates of why a piece of property was so important to purchase. You can see the development on the right, which was, you know, encroaching on the kind of open space. Do you know where this is? Everybody know where this is?
That's North Woods on the right.
This is the-
Off of Deepo Middle Road.
The old, just to give you an orientation here, the old landfill is due north of this, okay? And on the left also, you have more residential development, which is encroaching from the west. So, this was a beautiful piece of property to protect the relatively rural road that goes through there. Deepo Road was actually named after the kettle holes that are all along there, and you've got two of them right there. If you can imagine, the receding glacier from this area dumping off blocks of ice, it would be buried and form these kettle holes. But this is 41 acres. It was purchased for a price of 3.8 million, which now, looking back at hindsight, was a very good investment. It's a beautiful sloping piece of property, too. When you go by it, it really is pretty.
The right side there where you see the open area, that joins Windcrest East Development, and that is Open Meadow, and then it wraps around the Kowalinski Homestead into the wooded area where you can see the kettle holes. I believe there are three or four kettle hole there.
Oh, there's a magnificent picture coming up with a beautiful kettle hole.
But the idea, too, is that, you know, that was all the Kowalinski property that was sold, you know, so we did preserve some of it. I see that the Kowalinski Homestead area there is, has been for sale, and it says it's in contract now. I don't know, you know, but we at least have this portion of meadow and wooded area and the kettle holes.
I think the property on the south side of it is now for sale, too, right?
Yes, it is. It's about 13 acres of, it looks like half wooded and half meadow.
Okay, next slide. This is one of the kettle holes on the kettle hole ponds on the property. Not that scenic, but anyway.
We talk about this property a lot because there's no public access to it, and we do think, we do want to spend some time really exploring the property and determining whether it's appropriate to think about investing some funds to make this accessible, to put a trail in.
And before we go to the next slide, I mean, this also illustrates the importance of this particular piece of property for groundwater recharge, which is what provided by the kettle holes, which are pretty natural condition, actually, given the history of them, how they were formed around. Okay, next slide.
Okay. Milpon Preserve, which is the Goldman property. And what you're looking at is the car repair garage on East Main Street, and our access to the property is that driveway. This is a very interesting purchase, and the reason, again, is historic. In 1659, a man named John Tooker was given the permission by South Old Town to put the, acquire this property and put in the first sawmill. This is the first thing that happens in Riverhead, absolutely the first thing. And right now, we are spending a lot of time negotiating with the owners about how to get into this property. It's been a complicated process and will continue to be. But it's very important because it's part of the Sawmill River watershed. The town and county have preserved 60 acres of land on either side of the Sawmill River Creek north of this piece of property. So, it's, there is access to this property, but we need to work with the owner and figure out how to actually get people in there.
I think I've read, Nancy, that this might have been the first sawmill in New York State.
It was the first, well, I don't know about New York State, first in Riverhead. Yeah, 1659, yeah. Next slide is the North Fork Preserve. This is another interesting project. The county actually acquired 300 acres. We worked with them to acquire 173 acres, and we have a relationship, connection to this land, the 173 acres that border Sound Avenue. This was originally all farmland, farmed by the Tuttle family, and then it was the farm, they got out of farming and Press Wireless. Do any of you remember Press Wireless? So, they put together a consortium of newspapers, really led by the New York Times, in that building up on North Fork Preserve, if you've been up there. That's the Press Wireless building, which the hunting club that bought it from Press Wirehouse used as a recreation room. The technology, the radio technology about getting the news overseas went out of business when satellites came into use. So, Press Wireless got out of the business. So, that's when it was bought privately to be, managed as a hunting club. They did have tennis courts and used that building as a recreation center. Then the club got, experienced some hard times, and they offered it for sale. So, the county and the town partnered on it, were waiting for a management agreement on the 173 acres. I was part of Al Krepsky's committee to work with people to figure out what they wanted. The county presented at that point a plan that included a splash pond, a little general store, room for caravans. Everything under the sun was included in that plan, and I think it's very good news that nothing has happened because it is a beautiful piece of property. It's a wonderful place to go cross-country skiing. Bird watching is fantastic. The trails, they've kept the trails minimally mowed, so, but there are a lot of, a lot of arid ponds in there as well, so salamanders and frogs and all kinds of things. But it's a, it's an incredibly wonderful piece of, piece of property.
I'm willing to bet there's one or two pheasants running around up there that didn't, that made it through the hunt successfully.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know they used to release crates of them during hunting season and have hunts up there, but not all of them were always taken. So, I'm sure there's quite a few still running around up there. It is a very beautiful property.
Yes. George, are those more, are those kettle holes? Who would also run like Deepo Road?
You know, it's kind of interesting, when the wetland inventory was done in 1979, they, for whatever reason, they missed those wetlands. And they were actually put on the state, the town's map when the subdivision plan was actually being discussed.
When it was farmed by the Tuttles way back when, it was full of wetlands. And it was actually, the wetlands were very important because they were a source of irrigation for the farm crops and also water for the animals. So, it became more of a challenge as farming. You farm bigger and bigger pieces and use bigger equipment, so it became untenable. But they're not kettle holes.
No, yeah, to your question, they're not.
But they are wetlands.
Yeah, it's really wetlands.
Wetlands and ponds, so.
Next, next slide, please. Okay, so AD Jan is a realty company. This is the name of the company we bought the property from. And this also is on the Sawmill Creek watershed. It's across from BJ's, across the street from BJ's, if you can kind of imagine what that is. We purchased this in 2004, 30 acres for $300,000. So, not a lot of money, very important to protect the watershed. Now, there's another piece of property, 37 acres north of this piece of town property that's zoned commercial, is wooded and wetlands, and it is for sale. I think it's where there are a lot of homeless in camp.
Yes.
But it is certainly a piece of this watershed that we can, should consider trying to preserve. It is, it is for sale. And this is next to 13 acres of county-owned land. So, again, the, if you look at the GIS map, the town and the county have done an incredible job of preserving the land along Sawmill River Creek. Next slide, please. Hubbard Duck Farm. And you probably know more about this than I do.
Many years playing there as a kid.
So, this was purchased in 2010 at 78 acres. The town put in 2.7 million, and the county put in 2.7 million. It goes from south of the railroad tracks and is immediately adjacent on the west side to Indian Island Park. Now, I think one of the incredible resources of Riverhead Town is we have the Hubbard Duck Farm, you then have Indian Island Park, and you now have Broad Cove Preserve. That is an unbelievable stretch of preserved land in a very beautiful part of town. And I really think we need to collaborate and get it somehow, create a trail through all of those pieces of property. I mean, how wonderful would that be to be able to walk from East Main Street to, what is it? What's the road that goes? Can't even think of it.
105.
From the deli, from the deli up-
Overlook.
No.
Yeah, the dirt road.
No, not the dirt, oh, past Broad Cove, at the corner of Broad, Broad Cove.
Edgar?
It goes, yeah, Edgar. Thank you. Just slipped out of my mind. So, there's an opportunity there, an incredibly beautiful stretch of preserved property that we've never thought about in terms of its contiguousness and what the possibilities are. So, I think that's a great, a great, a great challenge for us. Next slide, please. And this is another view of Sawmill Creek. It's beautifully, you know, there's a lot of fragments that's come in, yes, but it's an incredibly beautiful part of where we live. Next slide, please. Well, the committee process, it's something that, you know, people would, should understand that when we are looking at a property, there are a lot of things that we look at in terms of the potential, either for purchase by the town, to encourage the county to purchase it, which we do, you know, actively. So, the next slide, please, Justin. We visit the sites. We have a parcel rating form where we rate each parcel based on, is it contiguous with other preserved areas, what the environmental impact is of preserving this, all these different things. We also have a stewardship form that we fill out. So, we're not just going to-
So we're not just going to the property and, you know, kind of just making rash decisions or anything like that. We, we have a very distinct process. Stewardship, we rate it on needs and wants, you know, for each existing open space site. So that's how we do that. We make our recommendations, in this case now, to Councilman Kern to go to the town board and present what we're thinking. We also work with the county, Peconic Land Trust. We feel that now that, you know, we're, our funding is low for making purchases, that we need to actively work together on that. So that's our process.
I keep asking Southampton and East Hampton to, you know, spend some of theirs over here or spread it over here for us to use.
Wouldn't it be nice?
They laugh at me every time I do that because they have unlimited funds.
I'll plug in the possible purchase of the former Peconic Paddler site.
We have reached out as a committee, you know, to Southampton.
That would be, that would be at least some kind of an agreement between the two towns. But some of that CPF money.
If the town of Southampton purchased the property of Peconic Paddler, maybe the town of Riverhead would have a management agreement there. So that's kind of, you know, what we're trying to encourage with that. And we all know where that is. It's contiguous to another parkland and right on the water.
Yeah, it would be.
I think it's kind of like a life support, so maybe.
We'll see what happens.
Reach out.
Good for us, that's a possibility.
Next slide, please. So our challenges, as this slide shows, which is kind of simple, Peconic Bay Boulevard at the bottom, there's development and there's open space. And let's face it, right now, people are, you know, developing at quite a rate. And that's our, that's our biggest challenge is to get these properties before they are developed. So the next slide.
Especially the ones that are environmentally sensitive.
Sure. Our biggest challenge is lack of CPF funding for new purchases. That, you know, we have looked and prioritized parcels for purchase and we're ready to go if there's funding on them, so that's the problem. Cost of ongoing stewardship also, you know, we have planting, the example was putting the fence at Weeping Willow, things like that, you know, we just need to be able to implement them. And it's probably that putting the fence at Weeping Willow was maybe about a two or three year ordeal in getting it done. So I'd like to see that, if we could speed that up a little bit. Encroachments on existing open space parcels. The Kopalinski property, we did do a stewardship tour of. And there's dumping in the form of trees that were taken down by adjacent neighbors, thrown onto the property, that kind of thing. And also encroachment, as Nancy mentioned, with the Mill Pond Preserve on East Main Street. Our accessway is blocked often by the commercial entity that's adjacent to it. So those are the types of encroachments we're talking about. And so that's a challenge for us, you know, to get that taken care of so the community can use these properties. So the next slide, please. And this just is a lovely open space site that we're, you know, we can show you. And our next slide will show our goals. We need to keep going to the existing open space sites for stewardship and maintenance. In other words, checking if there's dumping, encroachment, what needs to be done? Do we need to put, you know, benches in or kiosks at the Sound Avenue Preserve, that kind of thing? We need more accessibility. Nancy mentioned trails, you know, that would be nice for people to be able to walk through these areas. Keeping up with our, being involved with the county. We need to make more of a connection there so we can contact them easily and, you know, maybe propose these places to be purchased. We also need to work with other partners, Peconic Land Trust, the state would like to step in in certain areas, you know, and purchase, so that's all open. So the next slide. This is our biggest goal. We need to preserve as much open space as possible. You know, we're in that position now where we've got some beautiful vistas and beautiful areas that have been preserved, but there's more that we can do. And, you know, we're always open to.
That's Indian Island, right?
This is, no, I believe, I think it's cases, isn't it?
Case is creek?
Maybe it is, yeah, yeah. Our other committee members, Charles Cetus and Marge Acevedo, are not here today. Charles has an encyclopedic knowledge of every property in the town of Riverhead. So he's usually the one we lean on, what is this? And he thinks, that's what, by, of course, that's what it is. But this is our biggest goal and how we accomplish this, you know, without the funding is a big question. So we thank you for your time today. That's our last slide, showing you our biggest goal.
Well, we thank you for all the work that you've done over the years. This is, I know it's, it's an uphill battle every time you find a piece and it's like, let's get some money, can we get some money? Can we, you know, develop it a little bit with some trails and put some gravel down? I know it's hard all the time and with the economy and the building boom back in the eighties was great, there was money coming in all the time, you know, and that's why we preserve so much land. But it's, it's a struggle, but we appreciate you hanging in there and the work that you do is phenomenal. Those pieces of property that you've preserved are some of the most beautiful parts. Broad Cove Duck Farm is my favorite of all.
You would imagine condominiums built there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there were all kinds of plans for stuff to go in there. And that's an absolutely gorgeous piece of property. A lot of ticks on it, but it's a gorgeous piece of property.
Ticks are a specialty.
I take care of ticks.
That's why we need the trails.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But, yeah, we, you know, we, we have, you know, stewardship plans going forward, so that's our main thing right now.
Well, we appreciate your desire to do this and this is a volunteer committee. This isn't, you know, you don't get paid the big bucks to sit and do this, but we certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And everything that you do.
Thanks.
Kudos to Nancy for putting this all together, this presentation.
Nancy's our PowerPoint genius.
Excellent. Well, very nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go a little bit out of order right now. We're going to take matters surrounding the site plan approval for Island Water Park with Greg Berg.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
All right.
Good morning.
All right, so there's two resolutions in the packet for the town board meeting next week. One of them is the responses to the condition negative declaration, which we went over at work session last week. That was pretty straightforward and there is a resolution for preliminary approval, the Island Water Park Site Plan. Just want to go through, you know, there's a recitation of the project history, comments received from all departments and town agencies. So getting to the conditions of the preliminary approval. The applicant now, so the applicant did get, they have approved Health Department approval that has an approval for, I believe it's 10,615 gallons per day of sanitary density flow. That approval included all the interior catering space. So this preliminary approval will authorize the building department and fire marshal's office to issue permits, complete any of those necessary inspections to authorize the use of the interior space. As long as they pass all those inspections successfully, they can operate that interior space. The last couple of resolves deal with the remainder of the site, namely the pickleball courts and the go-kart track. So there are conditions in there. The applicant must obtain a freshwater wetlands jurisdictional determination from the New York State DEC. They did make that application to the DEC, I believe was submitted on April 3rd. The applicant must fully reclaim the mine under the DEC permit and provide certification to the town that the mine's been closed out. The applicant will satisfy the chief fire marshal's comments. The site plan shall be amended to include a barrier around the outside of the track to control stormwater management and erosion into the lake. That was a requirement from the town engineer's memo. The applicant must resolve any outstanding violations with the DEC relative to site improvements which were made without benefit of the permit. And then the applicant needs to file a covenant on the property in a form approved by the town attorney's office restricting the use of the track to go-karts and that the use of the track for any other type of vehicle shall be prohibited. That was one of the conditions in the condition and the declaration that we adopted. Pretty straightforward conditions, I think they're reasonable. Gets the applicant to use of the interior space pending all those inspections and will need to satisfy really with the DEC, those are the biggest conditions.
So only question I really have for you, I think most of the conditions are fair. The reclamation, I know the applicant is here, even if the applicant would like to come forward as well, but my question is that the length of a process for essentially for the grass to grow, you know, on the sloping areas of the, of the lake itself, I just know that it's going to take a substantial period of time. I know their first attempt go around, they planted stuff and I think they had a major washout and so they started round two of planting. I think they've made progress, you go up, Ken, they've made progress in getting things planted and I think they've succeeded, but from what I understand, it still could take, you know, potentially a year, year and a half for that grass to grow and to really, to be strong. And I just, I don't want to see a local business just being, you know, held on hold for the next year and a half, waiting literally for grass to grow along the banks.
Part of the DEC, so you know, is you do a planting, the seedlings have to come in. We've done two plantings this year, we've done over seven over the past five years. We're at about 65% coverage right now. But you have to have the seedlings and then they have to survive for six months and then they'll issue beyond that. When you do that math, it puts us at probably a year and a half. It's really tough and that's, not best case, but that's probably about where it is. Definitely won't be before a year, we'll end up losing almost two seasons.
So my only concern with that, you know, obviously, we're all aware of the history, the DEC was out there, there were issued violations. The DEC specifically mentioned the go-kart track and the recreational use of the lake, you know, the people swimming in the lake and using that, the inflatable obstacle course. I just have trouble reconciling the fact that sort of approving the track and the use of that lake without any sort of clear resolution from the DEC. Now, I mean, if the DEC, suppose the applicant works with the DEC, if we get something from the DEC indicating that they're okay with the use of the lake and the go-kart track, I would have no problem addressing that in a final approval. But until we have something concrete from the DEC stating that they're okay with those uses in that site, I just don't see how we can sort of approve a site plan without any of those conditions being addressed.
They have been put into the DEC, the requests have been made?
So the applicant, so the freshwater wetlands jurisdictional application was made to the DEC and I know the applicant's been working with the DEC to address the violations and the tickets that were issued relative to the go-kart track and the pickleball courts. Last correspondence I had from the DEC is that those were to be handled, they were going to adjudicate them administratively, but I have not received any type of resolution or indication that they've, you know, sort of wrapped that piece up.
Oh, good, that's good.
So, yeah, you know, I know they're working with the applicant, I know they're working with the DEC on the reclamation and the violations. My, my position is that I just, I don't see how we can approve something that we know is at odds with the DEC's permitting on the property that they've issued violations for. Again, if we get something from the DEC indicating that those have been cleared and they're okay with those uses, I would have no issue addressing that, you know, final approval. Again, this is a, this is just a preliminary approval, this is not the final. If we get something from the DEC, I would have no issue addressing that. You know, obviously, I'd work with the town attorney's office to draft something that is more comfortable with.
So to be clear, this is a preliminary approval for them to continue on?
Correct, preliminary approval. However, it would authorize, because the, the interior, the catering space really sort of got lumped into this site plan when the initial violations were issued back in 2024. There was nothing in that, the conversion of the use of that interior space that would have triggered any sort of expansion of the parking area. They had the parking area already, but it's really a change of use that, for better or worse, got kind of bundled in with this site plan application. Again, the conversion of that space, as long as it passes building permit, building inspections and fire marshal inspections, that it's safe for human occupancy and they've addressed any type of, you know, safety issues, comfortable with addressing that with the preliminary approval so they can begin using that space. But it's really the use of the track, pickleball courts and the recreation that I think we need to, we need to get something from the DEC on.
So I have a question. So what about the pickleball court? Does the DEC have a problem with the pickleball court? Are we approving that?
I'd have to double check. I mean, I believe it was for all the structures that were, that were constructed within the limits of the mine. I'm not 100% sure on whether that includes the pickleball track and the go-kart.
Pickleball court. Okay.
I'd have to confirm whether that was part of the.
No, that's good. So I have a question. So our engineering department required a buffer around the track.
Basically, you know, we had received pictures, they were forwarded to the town attorney's office demonstrating runoff from the track that was demonstrating clear erosion to the lake. I mean, this is something that can be addressed by like an asphalt berm around the edge of the track. That's not a significant.
So that pretends the lake from any, you know, from runoff?
Correct. Yeah, that asphalt will protect erosion, will direct, will direct it, you know, retain it on the track and direct it towards the swales that are within the track.
Okay.
So do we request like just a simple update from the DEC as long as they know that the planting, everything has been in progress and is in progress? I just don't want to say that. I'd hate to hold them up and keep the outside portion closed, you know, while we're simply waiting for grass to grow on the banks, which obviously just naturally is going to take its time. And I know they do, they have made some valiant efforts to do that.
So I did, I did put a call in to represent a contact that I have at the DEC, just requesting an update. I mean, again, the satisfaction of those issues with the DEC really rests solely on the applicant. We don't really have any control over that. As long as the applicant keeps working on that, the DEC, I'm sure, once they come to some type of resolution, will provide something, the applicant, they can provide that to us. But we have no, no authority over how the DEC is handling those violations or that mining permit.
Got it. Questions on that?
I just would have thought this would have come up in the secret as opposed to, it wasn't in their comment letter. You know, if they had an issue, why didn't they say it during the secret process to you? Do me a favor, don't, let's wait until we've resolved these issues. I know we're far along in the process with that. And in the secret review, they mentioned the things that the engineering was worried about. They're worried about a little bit of runoff in the lake. And they were also worried about, I'm sorry, what was the other, what was the, oh, the wetlands. Those were the two things that they mentioned. And then they said, be careful with spillage and notify if it happens. Just seems odd to me that this is now, at the 11th hour, something that, a hurdle that we have to overcome. That's a year and a half. That's, that would be my only comment.
So I mean, the DEC's letter, when we went through the secret coordination process, they led off with the comment, be advised, this agency does not accept or process applications for existing structures and we do not issue after the fact permits for existing structures located within regulated areas. Structures built within a regulated area without benefit of a DEC permit is either a violation of environmental conservation law or it does not require a permit. Permits must be obtained prior to any work. So I mean, that was, you know, they had, they like write off, write off at the back, you know, the violations were not, they're not, this is not a secret, this is not something that's come up at the last minute. I mean, the applicant's been aware of these violations and they've, again, I've requested sort of follow-ups, they've, they've been, they've been aware of these violations because they're not, you know, last minute conditions. I mean, if they, if the DEC is not going to authorize the use of that lake, then what are we even talking about?
Right. But have they actually, has the DEC at any point said you can't use the lake? Have they been stopped?
By understanding that they, when the, when the initial violations were issued were out there, they were told to stop using that lake. That's my understanding of the, the actions by the DEC.
Have you been told to stop using the lake?
Yeah, we were told last year. We're in the process of working an agreement out with them. But previously, and Greg knows this, they told us that site plan approval should have nothing to do with the mine and lake area. So that's why I think it's just a little odd that we're crossing this road. Greg knows that, right?
I mean, again, but we've got, so you acknowledge that the DEC said to stop using the lake.
But they are capable, I think, like, if we get your approval, we wait and then we get their approval. It's just, it's adding so much more red tape where they're more than capable of handling themselves as far as fines and penalties. We've experienced the sharp end of that stick. So I don't know why we're doubling down, that's just the way it seems to me and I apologize a little under the weather, so I'm like, so.
So can we separate the go-kart track, the pickleball courts from the actual lake? Like, can't we? If, if there's no water and they've addressed any of the drainage, then why would we hold back allowing them to use the go-kart tracks? I understand the lake might be, you might need something from the DEC, but why not be able to move ahead with the go-kart track? How does?
The track, the track itself was also part of the violations that were issued because the track was constructed within the limits of the mine. But then, I mean, it's, it's all, it's all part. But then, I mean, it's, it's all, it's all part of, we can't, they were issued violations for those improvements that are within the life of mine, so it's not just the use of the lake, it's not just the track, it's the fact that they're reclaiming the mine and these improvements were done within the limits of the mine. I mean, I just, I don't see how the town board can approve an application and a use that is in violation of the D E C permit. Again, if the applicant is working with the D E C, which they've, they've stated many times that they are, if we get something from the D E C that they've cleared the violations and if they needed amendment to their mine land reclamation permit, I, I think the board just needs something to be comfortable with and protect themselves saying that, you know, you're not authorizing or approving something that's in violation of the D E C permitting requirement.
I'm, I'm just a little bit confused if, I mean, our engineering department, this goes to the go-kart track, I mean, the pickleball, think to me, I don't even know why we're not approving that, but, but the go-kart track, if our engineers, I mean, they wanted a buffer around the track clearly to protect any runoff going into the lake and they did that probably, I'm going to guess, knowing that the D E C would require that, we, you know, the town required that, so I'm confused a, a little bit on if we do the buffer, why can't they open the track?
Because the track is in violation of the New York State D E C mining permit. Buffer, buffer or not, you know, berm, berm or not, I mean, again, you just, I, I think what the board has before them is a fair resolution, and again, we're not trying to stop anybody, not trying to put anybody out of business. Reviewing an application, considering all the factors, this track was built without benefit of any permits from site, I'm not trying to beat the dead horse, but this was done without any approvals. If this was done in a proper fashion, some of these issues could have probably been addressed rather than, you know, kind of like trying to wriggle around and, you know, sort of address it at the eleventh hour. I mean, again, I, I don't think there's anything unreasonable in this resolution. I think the town board, I don't feel that the town board can approve something that we know is in violation of the existing D E C mining permit and until that fact is addressed, I just, I don't see how we can, like in good conscience, move forward and just say you're good to use the track even though we know it's in violation.
Ken, do you have any kind of timeline from the D E C and when you're working with them?
They're, you know, we are working with them, but it's really tough, they move slow. They're famously slowly, anyone will tell you that. So, I don't know. You know, we're, we're doing everything weekend, we've done massive rounds of plantings, the seedlings are in, you know, unfortunately it took, we had Ricky Delia out there five straight years, I mean, we really, really tried. So, it's a tough, it's a tough, I think it's the consistency on, you know, and also some of the temperature changes going from warm hot to cold, hot to cold, so we've experienced some, some die-off, but thankfully it's moving along in a better direction now, but the timing of the D E C is like the speed of slow, it's really tough.
Yeah, we're experiencing that with the Navy and EPC.
I mean, the resolution, I don't know if you, you'd like the town attorney to weigh in, but I did review the resolution with the town attorney's office. Satisfies the site plan, you know, from a planning standpoint, it's appropriate. From a legal standpoint, I didn't get any feedback that it was inappropriate or the conditions were not proper for a preliminary approval resolution. Again, I just, I don't want to feed this thing to death, but I, I don't see how the board can, again, approve something that we know is in violation of the D E C. That said, if we can get, if we get something.
Even preliminary?
Preliminary, I mean, the, the preliminary approval is not binding, again, there's still several conditions that need to be met, but if the applicant can work with the D E C and address those issues with them, I would have no problem addressing that in a final approval. If the D E C is okay with that, recite that in a final approval resolution and then they'd be off to the races, but I don't see how we can give a final binding approval on anything that we know is in violation.
How about the pickleball court? What's that doing?
Like, is that also, is the pickleball court also in the reclamation area?
I can get clarification, again, I do have a call in to the D E C, I could get clarification and seek whether, whether or not that pickleball court is within the light, the limit of the mine, but we know that the go-kart track is.
And I think maybe even just the request that easy, that if, if they're waiting to use the pond and they're literally waiting for grass to grow, can they segregate out the go-kart track or something to at least let them use those facilities? You know, it's, I, I understand they've, you know, they've paid all their violation, they've paid all their fines, we're coming into the summer month, I'm no longer looking to financially, you know, hurt them and, and their business operations, so as they get into summer camps and schools out, you know, I, I think, you know, to hold them back from opening, to wait for the grass to go, I think would be an unfair request. So, if we can maybe then write to the D C or get a letter of some kind of confirmation to just kind of separate out which items of which.
I would be more comfortable having something back from the D E C.
I agree. Can you put them on the burner and see if you can get something from them?
Yeah, I'll reach out.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you've reached out as well, right? So, okay.
Right, thank you.
Let's do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have matters surrounding the monthly code enforcement report. It'll be Town Attorney Howard.
Good morning, Rich is out sick today, so I'm covering this.
Okay.
So, everybody has the report?
Yep.
Okay. So, not, not an tremendous amount of flashy stuff on here. About seventy-five new investigations opened during the month of April. You know, notably, the property maintenance violations will start ticking up with the warmer weather and the rain, you'll start getting those high grass weeds types, type violations. Had fifteen no building permit violations issued. I think on a, on a good note, there's no, there's no investigations open for unsafe buildings. In terms of tickets and violations issued, about seventy-five new tickets or NOVs issued to property owners. No new referrals to Supreme Court. Rental inspections, about fifty residential rental inspections, so single-family residences or multifamily residences, one hundred and twenty-five apartment units. During the month of April, about fifty-two thousand brought in in rental fees and that brings total revenue through the end of April to about one hundred and forty-seven thousand in rental fees.
How many, how many people short are we in code right now in terms of officers?
Right now, we've lost Kyle DeRosa, who was one of our code enforcement officers, so we have one vacancy.
Are we, are we interviewing?
I will be asking personnel to post that soon.
So, like a pace towards overall inspections for the year? I know this just, you know, it's a massive amount of work, but do they try to like pace themselves throughout the year, like they are tracked through, like visiting every single apartment over the course of a year?
Well, so, the, the rental, the rental permits renew annually now, so, you know, some months you're going to have more than others, but they do, with the apartment units, they do go into each unit, so usually you'll have code enforcement officers who are to block out like a two or three day block to go into John Wesley or the Conicrossing or Riverpoint.
Big complexes, yeah.
You know, and sometimes you get slowed down with that because sometime, you know, the, the tenants don't necessarily want to let you in or you have to reschedule, so, you know, sometimes those sort of drag out a little bit, but I think, you know, on balance, they get most of it done.
It's a big task. It is a big task, there's a lot to do.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, I would say, you know, one of the issues with having the vacancy in the code enforcement officer position is it's, it's unfortunately a relatively low-paid position under our current labor contract and I've been trying to brainstorm ways to make that a more attractive position because right now, there's no, there's no town list. Kyle DeRosa was, you know, the number one on the town list and now he's gone to Southampton. So, that leaves us in the position of sort of hiring from out of town. Anytime you're hiring out of town, especially if it's coming from west, you know, that's a cost to them for commuting. It also makes it more likely that if they get canvassed, they might choose to go to a municipality that's closer to home for them. So, I'm hoping that, you know, in the next, maybe, Rich has been out, but in the next couple of weeks or so, we might speak with our code liaison about a potential plan to help with retention.
Good.
It's important.
It is, you know, because a lot goes into training a new officer, they, you know, we pay for the code classes, it's also time invested by Senior Investigator Downs, Town Investigator Buckner, you know, learning our systems, learning the I P S program and with Kyle DeRosa as an example, he was here for just about a year and he, he was fully trained, he's excellent officer and swiped up by Southampton.
All right.
Thank you.
No, that's great, thank you. All right, next up we have the monthly town clerk report. Clark Wooton.
But you're not last.
In that case, go back there and sit down.
It's been a pretty busy month at the town clerk coverage, mostly FOIL requests, but with the new enhanced licensing with New York State DMVs and everybody has to come and get copies of their marriage records to prove why the name was changed and birth records and we have been, people have been panicking over that enhanced license, so we've been really busy with that.
It's only been around for how many years, right?
It's true, I don't, I don't have one quite yet, but I'll get one when I renew my license. Right now passports are still good and everybody's for flying.
That's right.
So, they know that, but other than that, it's, it's, it's really, FOIL requests are the big ones, marriage licenses as well as marriage certificates for the enhanced licenses are the big drainers and, and that's, fishing licenses are coming in, I mean, it's just a, it's a pretty busy office, there's always something going on there and in any downtime, we're trying to catch up on stuff that you have to catch up on with the master plan and all the local laws coming in, that's all, you know, moving target for us. And then, of course, we're training every day, we're, we're working on trying to get resolutions into the new software program and how that works, there's a meeting tomorrow with some key members of staff to, you know, just start familiarizing ourselves with it. We'd like to launch it, first meeting in June, that maybe, may or may not happen, but it's going to be right around that time, that's the time we're shooting for, so. But other than that, it's, it's going very well.
Jim, just a, with, with Civic Plus, is that going to help us with FOIL requests?
Well, that's next request is a, is a component of that, that's part of, yes, it should, it should help to streamline that and why we haven't kicked that off yet, I don't know, I think it's ready to go, so I'll check with Chip on that.
Okay.
Next request is part of that. I think, I think really, I think most of it when it ties into the website, which is also going to be Civic Plus, I think all of it's just going to marry together very nicely all of it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could put that next request piece in now and then marry it to the website?
We do have the next request in now.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, right. I mean, it's been downloaded in, but while we're not operating that, I have to find out why that, why that was.
Because, yeah, I'd be curious on how that, you know, the efficiency of that.
They still come in, I, I, it mangled my mind, but, you know, I didn't realize how many FOILs come in.
Oh, it's that time of year, that time of, you know.
Well, a lot of us, well, not a lot, there's a lot of realtors that do that, you know.
Well, that's, that's why we're trying to get building and planning on, you know, to get them live so that, and you pay a subscription like Southampton, you do in Southampton, right? And they can access that information without going through the clerk's office.
Yeah, well, we're just a conduit for that, it's just, it's a morning routine and.
I know, but it would take a lot of.
Hour checks, you know, and they come in and do it. And we're also looking at, I just, I'm looking at with Chip too and with Diamond Bank to see if we can streamline some of the application requests coming into our office. We get a lot of requests from out of state for birth certificates and for.
Great idea.
Marriage certificates and a lot of times I fill out the application online, send a copy of your I D, valid address, you know, a bill or something that shows that it's the right address that you live at and a ten dollar money order and they mail it. Now, granted, we answer our mail every day, if we get it in now, five minutes later, you're getting what you asked for, we don't, we don't hold mail. But I want to streamline that where they can make the application, make the payment online and then we just in the morning just mail that out. So, so we're looking at the logistics on that, I know we're starting to do that in the tax receiver office and representatives with the bank last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah, they're good, time is.
So, I want to put that online, I think that is streamline a lot of it, so. That's it.
Great, thank you, sir.
And we got our birdbath in, which is nice out front.
Oh, is it up? I know they were working on it this morning.
Yeah, it's beautiful, I gotta get Joe, I gotta get Joe here and have a little rededication for that birdbath, it's beautiful.
Very good. Excellent, thanks for handling that.
You guys are the best.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, next up we have matters surrounding the monthly justice court report with Counselor Pilau. Good morning.
Does anyone need a copy?
Yep.
All right, so last month was pretty straightforward, I did have one trial resulted in a fifteen-day jail sentence.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then, next week I have a trial on Monday for Public Hear Nation and two trials for front yard parking on Tuesday, so, and a few more loaded up for the rest of next, rest of the month and the rest of next month. Other than that, kind of your standard fines that we've been getting floating around that, you know, twenty to thirty thousand dollar a month range, a lot of default judgments in fire marshals and we'll see in the, in the months to come now that that misdemeanor, that one misdemeanor in the fire marshal section is now a violation, you'll see a lot more reflection of those pleas in that section. So, that is what I have for the month of April.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent.
And I'll stay seated.
You will stay seated because you're up next. All right, next up we have matters surrounding possible code revision to chapter one oh five, bus liability.
Everyone have a packet?
Yes.
You have a bunch of extras up here? Okay, so in two thousand nineteen, New York State passed a program where motorists who pass stop school buses, when the stop arm was out, they would receive an automated computerized ticket along with a video of their effects. The courts were hearing these up until twenty twenty-three, there was a case that came through, State of New York versus Croce, that put it on pause until the code, the law was redrafted to kind of close up some loopholes and I'll get to more of that later on when it goes to public hearing. So, it was easy for the program to start back up on the five West End towns because the five West End towns has a T B P A, which is Traffic Violations Parking Administration. Now, the five East End towns, we rely on our local courts to handle those, so it makes it a little bit more complicated. It's complicated because these are civil violations, you're either liable, you're not liable, it's not guilty, not guilty. So, the judges feel a little bit uncomfortable and I agree with why they would feel uncomfortable with that because the civil matters, it's either you're liable or you're not liable. Their judicial oath allows them to make a determination and they're supposed to have, you know, some level of discretion, like even, you know, for example, even in county court, when someone gets sentenced for a homicide, it's twenty-five to life, the judge has discretion to determine the sentence. Here, liable, not liable, that's really.
And you can't reduce it.
Exactly. So, that's really an administrative function and not what these, what our town judges have taken an oath to do. Same thing in the other East End towns, they're all moving toward creating this particular code and their judges are signing off on removing just the bus tickets. All the other V T Ls will still remain in the justice court because those are considered criminal violations and they're in the realm of where the judge can, you know, have them do defensive driving to lower it, things like that. This specific law is, there's really, there's no wiggle room, so it really should be in front of an A L J. So, the code outlines everything that it would require for us to remove them from justice court and to have an A L J appointed and to handle these matters.
Now, the fines for these go to who?
They, this is complicated. So, first offense, I believe it's two fifty, first, when that money is paid, it goes to the county. The county gets the first ninety percent and then I believe forty-five percent is parsed out from that and goes to the town and then some of it goes, maybe. And then some of it goes, I may be getting the percentages wrong, but there, it goes to the county first and then it's kind of funneled out to whoever's handling it.
The money that would come in, would it cover the cost of an ALJ?
It would, but it can't be directly paid to the ALJ because that kind of gets in the way of impartiality. So if, if a, if a for-profit company is directly paying the ALJ, then you can't really expect that ALJ to be fair and impartial. So I'll speak more to how we would handle payment of that individual and who that person would be, you know, when we get more into it closer to a public hearing. So that's where we're at.
Biggest thing, just so everybody understands, the judges can't take testimony like the way an administrative justice can. They can't bring someone to the stand and ask questions. An administrative judge can't.
Exactly. So that's, that's why this in particular is inappropriate in front of, in front of a justice court judge.
An administrative law judge can't issue a warrant. So if they don't pay the fine.
It'll, it'll be like a collections or, you know, the same way if you don't pay a parking ticket, it would result in collections. Because again, these are civil matters. You can't get a warrant for a civil matter and the DMV can't take action against your license for these.
Who comes up with the $250 fine?
I believe it was through the county in conjunction with the bus arm program. So we kind of have to go by what they determine the fines. Last I checked, I believe it's still what it is, is 250 for the first offense, then 275, then 300.
You're risking kids' lives and this is the fine?
I'm sure as time goes on, it'll increase.
So when was the last time that it was increased?
I think that was 2022. So I'm not, I'm not sure if it's changed since then. Nothing that I've seen.
Do you know about how much we would be losing in revenue by doing this?
So what do you mean? To adjudicate them?
Well, yes.
So the vendor that started this program pays for the administration, the notice, all of those things. So the only cost that I need to figure out would be the cost of having someone preside over these, which I imagine could eventually come from the revenue, but it can't be directly from this company.
Right. So how many, how many of these do we get in the town of Riverhead?
I would say since it started back up after the, after that case went through the appeals, I would say maybe we have, we have 15, 50 in limbo right now.
Well, 50 people running plus 1,000.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Allegedly.
Yeah. I mean, there are some.
They're on video.
Right, but there are, there are some where, you know, you have to really determine, you know, exactly when the, the arm comes out and if the car made an attempt to stop or not. I've seen many of the videos when I've been in court on other matters when these were going in court. And it is kind of scary to see some of them. I'll just leave it at that.
That's why the fines should be higher.
I agree.
But we have no control over that.
I don't think so. I'll double check.
Double check. We don't, Eric's saying no.
Eric's saying no, so no. All right, so that's, this is the drafted program. It's very similar to the other East End towns that have implemented it. So we're just, you know, we're catching up and we're making sure we have something in place so that we can start, you know, this program back up. The judges in the justice court are still, you know, are comfortable and they're not, you know, feeling like they're violating their oath or anything like that.
And there's no way to add this to their oath of office?
Well, their oath is to have discretion and this robs them of that. So I don't think. I don't, I don't know how.
All right, all right, you know, just a legal question I figured I'd ask of a legal person.
So are you saying that this needs to go to public hearing?
Yeah, I think so because it's, it's essentially creating a new section of our town code.
Thank you very much for correcting that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yep.
Okay, last matter for open session prior to the resolutions is matters surrounding possible code revision, chapter 301-283.20 and 301-283.25, location and number of permitted retail and onsite consumption establishments for cannabis. And that's with Matt Charles.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, so in brief, we have been working on this for a little bit in code revision. It has made its way through. The first thing this revision does is correct the permitted zoning use districts. So, you know, to my understanding, it's always been the intent of the town to include business CR, which is largely, largely in Wading River as a permitted zoning use district for cannabis. Just so everyone knows, the rationale was anywhere that retail is allowed, that's where these uses were allowed, subject to all the restrictions. Seems like business CR was left out for whatever reason. It might have just been a Scrivener's error, so we're adding that zoning use district in, but still subject to all the provisions that are in the code. So if one was to locate in corridor one, which is Wading River, we could only have one. But they're subject to all the restrictions, so it's still difficult to do, but it's extremely limited. The second thing this does is codifies on our end the process for applying one of the, for a retailer onsite consumption establishment, which this is the process we follow now. This is what the state guideline is. This is just putting it, putting it into our code. So when someone comes in, they know exactly what they have to do. So the first step in the process, if you guys aren't aware now, we get what's called a notice to municipality. That's the applicant saying, hey, I have a license. That has to be filed in the office of the town clerk. That's a requirement of the cannabis law. So we get those. It gets distributed to planning. I respond on behalf of the planning department, on behalf of the town board saying yea or nay. It fits the requirement or it doesn't. That gets emailed to OCM as our opinion on the application. So that's what you see in C. That's a new section. And it's also going to put a timeframe on those positive responses. So say someone comes in, so we, we're not necessarily having this issue now, but they could get a response from the town and then they don't do anything. They essentially sit on the location or whatever. So now it's going to have a 90-day timeframe that will track that the letter is good for. Once that 90 days elapsed, they'll have to reapply.
Now, when they reapply, they go.
Same thing all over again.
But if some, how does it work? Like if one person applies for a specific location, they get approved. Somebody else applies for a location right next door, they're denied because.
First person.
Because it's within 2,000 feet.
Yep.
When they reapply, are they at the top of the list or are they at the bottom? How does the timing going to be figured out?
So my opinion was, is, so the first person applies, they get approved. They have 90 days to submit a land use application, either building permit, special permit, site plan, whatever application they need. Then if they never do that, they're on the 90-day timeframe that it elapsed. Then the next person, I guess someone else could apply in that corridor. But the second person, no matter what, if we have responded positively to someone, the second person would get denied because they don't meet the requirements. They, they would have to reapply too, once the other person goes out.
So how will we do that? How will somebody, if somebody, let's play, we're the second person. We've been denied because it's 1,000 feet from another pre-approved location. That pre-approved location never opens up, doesn't do anything. Time expires, they're out. How does the other applicant even know that?
I think they'd be working with the state to look at a location anyway because that's what happens before they come to us. And they would, like anyone else, they'd have to call the town, see what's in, see what's out, and then apply like anybody else, like for any other issues. We couldn't really track and tell people, oh, this is open, this is not, because we're not really in the real estate business. We're doing, a lot of manpower goes into these as it is.
Can we comprise like a list or something that, with expiration dates on them that people can simply look at and check back?
I could, but I mean, it's, it's so limited. And we, we have an internal list that we walk, work off of that's constantly evolving. But I'm going to be working with Anna from our GIS department to really update and get the map much better than it is now. So Anna, if you're listening, we have a little work to do. But I think it would be, it'd be too difficult. It's very easy for someone to call and then, you know, in planning, we're tracking all of them. We know where they are, where they aren't. We have two that are operational now. We have two in the hopper essentially. It's easy just for us to say yes or no.
Common sense would say don't go out and buy a piece of property because you want to think you want to put a cannabis establishment on it. Investigate, do the law.
Do your due diligence.
Do your due diligence and anybody.
It's just a foolish move if you buy something hoping you're going to get it.
Yeah, it's a buyer beware situation, unfortunately.
Hundred percent.
And then the last section you see is just the statutory authority that the state gave municipalities to enact this law, establish time, place, and manner. So that's really it. Looking to get it in for publishing post next week if the board is okay and then a public hearing in June.
I'm fine with that.
That's good to me.
You know, let, let's say somebody comes in and they, they have their, you know, they put it in for this property and then somebody comes in and puts it 1,000 feet away. Do you notify this person?
Everyone who submits one gets a, gets a response from the town.
Saying that there's one 1,000 feet away.
So, yeah, you'll get a response that says, oh, you don't meet the distance requirement from whatever it is, either another establishment or one of our things.
So you'll say from another establishment?
Yep, yeah. And our response, just so you know the way it works, our response goes to the state. I often will provide it to the persons who's, who's applying also.
So you have, you've given them notice?
They get notified why it's getting denied, yeah.
There's another cannabis operation within 1,000?
Yeah, whatever.
That puts, that puts them.
Correct.
They can call you and say, when did they give it? That was, that was 89 days ago.
Yeah.
Okay, they did.
20 minutes before you called.
Right.
Yeah, that's, sometimes that's how it happens.
Yeah, exactly.
Our timelines all start from when we get the official notice. That's the only way to do it.
Does it get timestamped?
Yeah, gets timestamped by the clerk and then the clerk, Jim sends it out to everybody. And then we respond, we have 30 days to respond and then we can ask for an additional 30 days if we need to.
Good. I just don't see it here, but we had a discussion about the areas downtown when there's just never going to be a cannabis shop because there's no locations and people were continuously applying at different locations. So are we addressing that or just?
The, the recommendation in speaking with the town attorney's office is that we're going to leave our code the way it is only because in the future, something can change in zoning that would maybe allow these, these uses to happen. We don't want to necessarily be too restrictive, but there's enough overlap with things that would prevent it that the likelihood that it could go downtown is very, very small.
And typically, just where is the majority of this business CR district? So say Wading River is it?
Wading River, it's on 25.
Is that East Wind or what is that?
East Wind is, but, East Wind is business CR, the shopping center is business CR. But we have to remember, there's churches there. There's a school across the street. So it's.
Got a lot of traffic already.
Yeah, so it's really daycares, all that thing is. And then if one could locate a corner parcel in corridors one, two, four, and five, it's only one establishment, either onsite consumption or a dispensary. So there will not be, you know, some overwhelming number in those four corridors. Corridor three, which is Route 58, allows them every 2,500 feet, which we have one operating on Route 58, one that's currently in site.
From Wading River, from like corridor one versus corridor two, like belief is.
Corridor two.
Right, corridor two. That's right at the beginning. But even with corridor two, do we still have to go back 2,500 feet into corridor one?
It's a good question. I'll, I'll consult, but I would think so. I think we would still have the distance requirement between.
This is a separate clause, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes. But I would want to consult with our attorneys first.
Got it. All right, thanks.
Cool.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, that concludes our open session. Now we're going to move on to resolutions. Deputy Supervisor Higgins, come on up and read the resolutions.
Okay, so if the board's ready, we'll get right into it. Resolution number one, Water District Capital Project 82507, budget adoption for well 4-1 capacity increase. Solution number two, authorizes the supervisor to execute agreement with Todd O'Connell Architect PC for ambulance district building renovations.
They're moving right along with the process up there?
Yep. And resolution number three allows us to pay for that architect capital project number 12506, ambulance district new building capital reserve fund balance transfer. Number four, authorizes highway superintendent expenditures 2025-2026. Number five, sets hours for town beaches. Number six, sets hours for town beach parking lots.
Just to be clear on this, the first one you read sets hours for town beaches. The hours are from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Those are the hours that lifeguards are on duty at the town beaches, at town beaches, just so everybody.
Right, just so the public's clear and also.
Understands that.
That the bathrooms would be available at that time as well.
Yes. And the other one, the beaches, the parking lots are actually open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but lifeguards will only be there from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Right. Number seven, ratifies a salary increase for a senior office assistant. Number eight, ratifies the appointment of a water treatment plant operator 2B. Number nine, ratifies the provisional appointment of an employee to wastewater treatment plant operator 4A. And number 10, sets terms and conditions of employment for deputy sewer district superintendent. That's for Tim Allen. Number 11, reappoints a provisional senior wastewater treatment plant operator 2. Number 12, appoints a seasonal water treatment plant operator 2B. Number 13, appoints a fire marshal 1. Number 14 and number 15, appoints a maintenance mechanic 2. Number 16, appoints member to the Town of Riverhead Hispanic Development, Empowerment, and Education Committee. Number 17, ratifies the resignation of an automotive equipment operator. Number 18, accepts the retirement of a maintenance mechanic 3. Number 19, accepts the retirement of a maintenance mechanic 4.
Both these people, Christopher Schauer and Ziggy Ragupka, longtime employees of the town.
Yep.
Great workers. We wish them nothing but the best on their retirement. We appreciate their years of service to the town. He said to see him go, they were both very good workers for us.
Absolutely.
Best of luck to them in their retirement.
Number 20, extends the bid for electric motor repair and replacement, including emergencies. Number 21, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for 2025 annual construction contract. Number 22, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for removal and disposal, disposal of sludge cake and grit screen waste. Number 23, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for 2025, I'm sorry, for corrosion controlled chemicals PO4. Number 24, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for 2025 annual procurement contract. Number 25, approves special event chapter 255 application for Church of the Harvest, East End Church Unity Day. Number 26, approves special event chapter 255 application for Main Street Agency and Associates LLC, live on 25 July 18th and August 1st, 2025.
All right.
Number 27, a men's resolution 934-2024 for racetrack not street, 2025 Fall Motorsports Racing Series at Epcal. Number 28, a men's resolution 935-2024 racetrack not street, 2025 Summer Motorsports Racing Series at Epcal. Number 29, a men's resolution 969-2024 East End Arts Mosaic Festival, addition to location of event. Number 30, authorizes designated alcohol service vendors to serve alcohol at the Mosaic Community Street Painting Festival. Number 31, adopts a local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, Section 7 thereof, titled Definitions. 32, adopts local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, Prevention, Section 24 thereof, titled Interference with Fire Department Fire Marshal or CEO. Number 33, adopts local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, Section 14 thereof, titled Assistance to Authorized Agencies Reimbursement of Expenses. Number 34, adopts local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, didn't get the article, flammable and combustible liquids. Number 35, adopts a local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, Section 25 thereof, titled Outlook Fires. Number 36, adopts local law to men, chapter 231 of the Riverhead Town Code, titled Fire Prevention, Section 66 thereof, titled Penalties for Events Notice of Violation. Number 37, assesses cost of labor and material for previously authorized remedial actions at premises known as 12 Longview Drive, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-14-2-12. Number 38, Riverhead Town Board supports the development of a YMCA recreation facility at the former New York State Armory and authorizes the Office of the Town Attorney to seek amendment of original bill SO 4404 slash AO6825. to seek amendment of original bill SO 4404/AO6825, including home rule request to authorize lease or sale to the YMCA of Long Island. Number 39, issues responses to comments on conditional negative declaration, CND, for the site plan application of Island Water Park DBA Scott's Point, site plan amendments 5835 Middle Country Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-135-1-7.34. Number 40, grants preliminary approval for the site plan amendment application of Island Water Park DBA Scott's Point, 5835 Middle Country Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-135-1-7.34, and number 41 pays the bills.
Okay, this concludes the open session of our work session for today. In a moment, we will go into executive session to discuss, under legal, potential litigation, acquisition of real property with Howard and Hurley and Thomas, and possible litigation matters surrounding possible litigation with Howard. So if I could have a motion to close open session and go into executive session?
Supervisor, can I just
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
I was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning, and there was an article in Newsday published yesterday with regard to items that are not going to happen in the town, and that was based off the bid website. I spoke with Liz O'Shaughnessy, and she asked Newsday to refer to the Chamber of Commerce for the events that are actually taking place, because what's posted on the bid website's not accurate information. Okay? If you could speak to Liz O'Shaughnessy, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.